Okay, here by policy, council meeting with an executive session to order Tuesday on March fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, seven P M. I'd like to welcome everybody here. We've already done a slide flag salute. We did that in our workshop. We have everyone here, so there's no need to do a roll call. And we'll go right down to approval of minutes, the city council workshop minutes, February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, with planning commission.
Minutes, February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, joint city council, planning commission workshop as presented.
I have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? City council meeting minutes, February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five.
Move to approve minutes, February fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, or any meeting minutes after.
I second that.
I got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? City council special meeting minutes, February twenty-one, two thousand and twenty-five.
Well, I'd like to move to approve the special meeting minutes from February twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-five.
I'll second that.
Okay, got a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? And it takes us approval of our minutes. I'm gonna read this. If you wish to speak during the public comment portion of this meeting, please complete a request to speak card and turn it into our city clerk. Uh, if it's recommended that you seek resolution of a complaint through the appropriate city department by scheduling meeting with a council member or city staff or before bringing it to the matter of the city council. Our financial report, we have a little problem with our financial reports, so we will not have a financial report today. So we'll go jump right down to public comment, pre-arranged presentation, Maricay schools. It's gonna be Sam Boardman. Are y'all ready? So come on up. I know there's nobody really here, but come on up. I know Mrs. Kiefer was here, she'd be helping you. Come on, you two are doing it. Come on over.
Put the mic on.
Yes, yes, yes. That works. Okay, you can cut on right here. Use your big voice, you talk right into the mic, okay?
City council, thank you very much. My name is Julie Conrada.
My name is Jenny Ramon Maguani.
The Turkish students in St. Paul were never going crazy. We are here to share with you some of the things going on at our school. Monday, March, have a wonderful day of school. This is a huge day because everything that we have had, wonderful days of morning and one. We are excited for more to come. First one, for March to classify appreciation. During this week, we like to take the time to show our thanks for all of our year, for all they do to help build that summer moon. To this school. If you know any free students celebrating them in school. The first week of March is a very busy time. We also have a lead across North Carolina, where we celebrate our wonderful week. We have fun, fun, a thing and activities to help for our wonderful. Feel free to meet as much as you can this week.
We are so excited to see the change space that we see tender. There are so many wonderful things when we're in. We have a Turkish student, I tell him about the whole thing they took part in. Thank you too though that the case and that thing that's paid for, any part of the education.
But trying one was bad. We will have an opportunity to watch a performance of field hand, March four. We will be listed and swept away its way. So I wonder what we can be his for our people.
At the end of the month, we will be having our monthly book and year award assembly at Summer Moon. This is the first time to celebrate those students who are going above and beyond. If you know a student of the month, we should too. The, 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 the plans done. Families and parents are always welcome to attend celebrating their students.
In half of the month, paintway is right around the corner. March twenty-fourth, the month twenty-eight is green big. There will be no sport that week, no screen time is set. Thank you for letting us speak to all the things we work so hard at school.
Hey, thanks for coming. Good job. I'll tell Mrs. Kiefer and tell your teachers you did a really good job.
Thank you, Kiefer's here, she knows.
Oh, that I didn't know. Well, thank you for doing that. Nicely done. Uh, I just think that's super cool. Unfortunately, Wendy River uh is unable to do it this time, partly because our leader for the student council is still on returning leave. And so it's been generated by the kids have been doing it all, and they just didn't get it done this time. So, thank you again. All right, our next pre-arranged presentation will be Maricay County Clean Water Consortium.
Members of the council, thank you very much. My name is. I think it's on the agenda, aye. Um, I'm here along with our minister, Matt Jensen, to talk about a new candidate that's been formed in Maricay called the Maricay County Clean Water Consortium. I think they have a little presentation there, somebody else. I'll talk about the process and the formation of the group, and then I'll turn it over to Matt, who is also the manager of the consortium. So save all your tough questions for the second speaker, please.
And then click that little circling thing at the top three times.
Okay, we'll just start off. This gets short. Okay, what is the Maricay Clean Water Consortium?
He doesn't share with screen.
I'm so glad I don't have to do this anymore. Do virtual.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm ready for the next one, yeah. Next slide, please. Okay, the Maricay Clean Water Consortium is a separate entity created by partnership between the Port of Marl and Maricay. It was formed through an I J, intergovernmental agreement. The consortium mission is promote access to safe drinking water throughout unincorporated areas of Maricay by funding, developing, and building projects to provide drinking water to residents affected by nitrate contamination. And that comes from the I J. Consortium structure, I can't read quite many. Anyway, I didn't, I didn't, okay. It's governed by board directors consisting of two members from the Port of Marl and Chief of Maricay County. Board members are Lisa Middlegore and Kelly Dory, county members are David Sikes and Tamara Maverick. Day-to-day business conducted by appointed managing director, who is Matt Jensen, at the time we wrote this, that we had our first meeting. Uh, advisory members appointed for their knowledge and direct experience in the consortium's mission, which will provide non-binding strategic advice to the board. Uh, we are, just a quick side note, we did ask the city to provide a representative to that advisory. And uh, they agreed, right? Uh, sources of financing, major financing for clean water infrastructure projects come from private state federal grants. Operational expenses funded initially from local government sources. Okay, the last one is the consortium's ultimate goal is to plan, finance, and build pipe underground clean drinking water infrastructure in the Maricay County Loblaws area. So that kind of sums up uh what it is, how it was formed. So I, they don't have any questions to me, they want to talk about that part of it, or turn it over to Matt?
Um, just a question on how it was formed, because I'm not sure that it really was clear. How did you determine how many board members were gonna be on there and determining like the specific individuals that were on there?
The uh, the board members were determined, it were written up in the intergovernmental agreement for the county and the board. The board and the county both uh signed this intergovernmental agreement, and they also contributed funding for it, the initial funding. And in that intergovernmental agreement was spelled out what the board members were. And uh, it was just talked about what would be a appropriate size of the board. And then uh, each, the court and the county each elected people, agreed which people would be on there. Uh, as far as the city and the advisory uh group, their people, uh, we just asked the the city to come up with a person for that. That answer your question?
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else, any organizational question? Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Matt.
Letting runs away like he doesn't have my back. So um, council, thank you for letting me come in today. Um, uh, less than a year ago, I was, I was in here to bring up some discussion on West Lynn and uh, proper the idea for consideration of connecting to your municipal water supply. Um, as we, we're still working on that, or the auspices of some grants that we've received. And actually, the engineer's been in touch with uh, with your city contacts and is working on that. Uh, as we look at the consortium, this is the next step. Um, uh, as I've said before, I'm not sure if it was in that meeting with you or in other venues. Um, while there's several entities, a state, federal, um alphabet soup type organizations that have a very close eye on this part of the Loblaws, none of them are uniquely set up to, to put uh boots on the ground and pipe in the ground. And uh, I appreciate the support of the county commissioners in stepping up and where it's not, uh, I it, it's odd to say, it's not a county issue, but it is a county issue. It's not something that counties caused, but that were uniquely set up to be the local government to take care of it. And to your point, as far as the board, um, uh, the, the county is following how they did the broadband uh consortium on that, where the Port of Marl has some particular expertise on infrastructure in that. And the county's joining in with it. We didn't come and invite the cities because you have your drinking water, you have your municipal systems. And by and large, we're looking at, at solving issues for the unincorporated areas. Uh, but we realize that you are a very significant portion and the solutions that we can provide. Not all, um, but we're, we're looking forward to working with you, and so we're having this, uh, kind of the executive board to make some budgetary project decisions, and then we'll have this advisory board, which will be providing some representation at to make sure that, uh, that your community members, the ones who live and work in the city and, and come around, that might that might not be residents of your city, and help participate and be a voice for your neighborhoods and for the people they can rub shoulders at on the, in the grocery store and in the schools and such. And so we're, we're excited about this. Um, as we've, as we've started, there's a few things we're getting in, in order. Um, we're getting maybe um, your bylaws set up for our next meeting and making sure we have that that is set up correctly. We do have legal counsel that's separate from the uh, the county and uh, we're, had a meeting with her today and in her speed. And we're also going to be making sure we go through the process to identify an engineer and, and our grant writers to make sure that we, we go through the right process. And so um, we'll be, we'll be hopefully working with you much closer on some of the solutions that come through. Uh, engaging with the city, using your representative to help us to, uh, to engage with the communities that are outside your boundaries. And um, we're hoping to, to be able to seriously address some of the issues that we're having with groundwater in the, in the unincorporated areas. So um, we, we're appreciative of your help, your support. Um, not being on the executive board means that we don't have to ask you for annual money. And so that's a nice thing, uh, but we do realize that you have a huge role in it. So, any questions for me on, on what we're um, what to expect with the consortium?
So once you have your bylaws in place and a few things like that taken care of, when do you start meeting with the community or the community members that are most impacted?
So um, on the technical advisory grants, where we've got our, um, from the county side, that kind of came into role before the consortium was uh, they're just gathering some information. We're looking to actually do some preliminary engagement with the community in the next month or so. Um, as, as far as the consortium, we have separate projects and separate items that we're looking at. We'll be getting engaged with West Lynn, but that's gonna kind of be a, uh, there's gonna be a migration between, uh, because monies are all funded through the, uh, through the county, and it's, it was underway before the consortium was, uh, created. Uh, but we will be identifying some, some outreach and other options that we're going to do. One of the things that we'll likely be doing is, uh, we're gonna be chasing funding after projects and engineering, uh, perfect solutions. And as part of those, we'll be doing separate community outreaches as we go through it. Uh, because we realize there's not one solution that solves all the, um, all the problems that we're having with the nitrates here. And so each, each project, each grant, uh, funding will likely have its own separate community in the instrument portions, and we'll be working through those. I don't have those set, this we're getting ready. We've, we've actually with Maricay County as the, um, quester, we have asked for some credit congressional discretionary spending. Um, a third phase of the project of the Loblaws on the nitrate project that we've got going. First one has been doing the well testing and identification. The second one was going to be engineering. The third one, uh, that we just applied for is actual, uh, actual projects. Uh, now that one is two or three years down the road, more like three years, uh, but we're gonna be looking for other projects that started much sooner than that.
So, uh, it's the engineering piece that's going to look at things like septic and well construction and that sort of thing? Is there any work from the county side to do some planning, market research, to change some of those pieces?
As far as?
Well, um, I think that the state has some minimum setbacks for septic versus wells, for example. And I'm not sure that all of the places in West Lynn have met that criteria. So I'm curious how the county plans to address that.
Yeah, and sometimes that's, um, that's a little bit difficult, unless we bring money to the table. Um, you know, existing, existing improvements are all grandfathered in. We have a hard time going in and saying, hey, you've got to dig a new well. And um, unless we can do wells that will be identified and go down farther and be, uh, be lined, so they're, they don't have seepage from, uh, from the, uh, just a little bit lost money. From the septic systems. And um, so we'll be looking at all these kind of solutions as we go through it. Uh, West Lynn, one of the easiest ones would be to connect to your system. And that's one of the things that we'll, that R and D is gonna be reaching out to the community very shortly and starting to get engaged, talking through the pros and cons of that. Uh, hopefully getting feedback so we can finalize and, and look at the engineering solutions on those, on those issues.
So are we only looking at West Lynn? Is that?
This is for all the areas in the, in the Loblaws that's in Maricay County. So we're looking at anywhere that is impacted by nitrates within the Loblaws area of Maricay County. We realize it's an issue, it's not gonna go away quick, um, but we're gonna start working towards it.
Well, I think that one of the chief complaints from people over the winter is that it doesn't feel like anything has really happened since all came to the forefront. And so just having some connectivity with people in West Lynn and with some solutions for them to, I don't know, and for the team, I guess, to tease out what could possibly, how that be funded and what people can look at for solutions. Um, I think they need to hear what those are.
They do.
Yes.
Definitely, and it's been a little bit slower coming together than I hoped, um, but we're, uh, we're, I think we're coming up to that catch point where we can and hopefully with the designation of a representative tonight from Oregon City, we'll, uh, uh, we'll get a little bit more voice on that, so.
Anybody else have any questions? Well, thank you, Mr. Jensen. Thank you, appreciate it. Action items, ordinance two. Well, they can if they want. Now, I don't have to tell them. They're perfectly capable of going home when they want to build a home for their dad.
Some people like to.
However, if you wish to stay, you're welcome to stay, but if you had to leave or needed to leave, that would not be rude. And thank you for everything for coming. Appreciate it. I never had to be pulled. Or this two dash twenty twenty-five amendment to the Boardman Municipal Code adding title twelve, chapter twelve point one six, utility use of the right ways.
We've been talking about this one for a while, so this is the final adoption tonight. Um, there's two of them here. Um, the first ordinance makes some minor changes to chapter twelve point oh eight, which is the, um, I don't remember which, which one oh eight is specifically.
Excavation.
I think it is the excavations, and then it adds the whole twelve point, um, one six, which is the, um, the ability, what we're doing is we're moving from the franchise to a right-of-way license. Um, it doesn't move everybody immediately, as we've discussed. It will move people as, as franchise agreements come up, they will move over to the right-of-way license process. Um, what I will say is that there are three parts tonight. There's two ordinances and a resolution. Um, what's not here tonight is the B. And the B part of that will be here next month. So, how do you answer questions on individuals? That's kind of the summary of the, the three of them that are, that are there. So it's the two ordinances and the second resolution.
Definitely, you're reading into the record.
All right, so I'm going to approve the reading by title only, only, the ordinance two dash two zero two five, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the Boardman Municipal Code adding title twelve, chapter twelve point one six, utility use of the right way.
Then the staff members.
And the second.
And the second.
I can second.
Oh, that's right, second. Okay, I got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Cool. Uh, ordinance two dash two zero two five, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the Boardman Municipal Code adding title twelve, chapter twelve point sixteen, utility use of the right of way.
I move to the ordinance two dash two zero two five, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the Boardman Municipal Code adding title twelve, chapter twelve point one six, utility, utility use of right of way. I'll second that.
Got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Ordinance three dash twenty twenty-five, amendment to the Boardman Municipal Code adding chapter thirteen point one two, underground wiring control district.
I moved to approve the reading by the, are you gonna? That for part?
I, I, I mean, it's all part of the same process, yes.
I moved to approve the reading by title only of ordinance three dash two thousand and twenty-five, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the Boardman Municipal Code adding chapter thirteen point twelve, underground wiring control district.
Same, but, okay, got a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Okay, ordinance three dash two zero two five, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the Boardman Municipal Code adding chapter thirteen point twelve, underground wiring control district.
Move to adopt ordinance three dash twenty point five, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the Boardman Municipal Code adding chapter thirteen point one two, underground wiring control district.
I second that.
Okay, got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Action items, resolution six dash twenty twenty-five, surplus pro, personal property.
So do we have a list of what the others, where is that?
And, and it's on the second.
On the second one?
It's on the second one.
I just don't have my normal computer with me.
Would you like mine? It has the option of other users.
Hey, I see it, it's on my, where did it? This is, thank you. Okay, so all of us is, there was a few things that, um, uh, I went to Public Works, but we didn't catch the first time. The first one was in order for our phones, we surplus the phones in order for them to be any use to the person who wants to buy it, we had to do that system or Panasonic system, and then the other things were added, um, from, uh, Luis.
This is a time for discussion, I'm gonna ask her questions.
Yeah, I see, yeah, I don't, I don't have a problem with that, yeah.
So it says street sweeper out here.
Yeah.
We have another one.
So we have, which street sweeper is talking about the little mower or the?
Yeah, it's a mower.
No, no, it's a street sweeper.
Cause mower is underneath it, yeah.
Yeah, it's a street sweeper, anything.
Yeah, there's a sidewalk sweeper. The mower is also a sidewalk sweeper.
Oh, yes.
I will be purchasing a new street sweeper, and we will be, um, surplusing the old one.
And when are we purchasing a new one? Cause it isn't, that ain't been for years from now.
Um, we're hoping July.
Yeah.
July.
Yeah. That was one of the updates we did from who did.
That you moved it.
Is there a reason we couldn't have both?
The other one, we spent a lot of money into it every year. We average, I think, five to ten thousand a year. We put in, quit changing the fans, um, the bells, the nineties, so forth. Um, we got a call this week when we were gonna start our street sweeping the streets, there were dirt. We tried to street sweep in the streets. We got complaints that there was dust. That's, street sweeper is outdated, it doesn't, no longer do its job correctly, uh, so we figured it was time to get a new one.
And, and the individual in there is like wearing a mask, I mean, it's really bad.
Yeah.
And it, and it's, and the municipality that we're gonna connect it with has nothing. So it's just a way to help the neighboring city.
So my question is, like, right now, with all the rocks and stuff there on the road, so are they just gonna sit there and do it like?
No, we're, we're street sweeping right now, so it is. We're doing, we're using it right now.
Oh, so we are using it?
Yeah, we're using it.
Even with the complaints and the face masks and everything.
Yes.
Cause the face masks have been used for a while there.
So it's gonna go up for, I guess, giveaway more or less?
Yeah.
When we're done with it?
Correct.
Yeah. What, are we gonna do one?
What's with the hydrants?
Uh, we will be donating the hydrants to the fire department.
Not the dog park?
No.
Oh, my goodness. It took me a minute to get your job. To the fire department, okay.
Are those the hydrants that came off Columbia?
Yes.
So the city, doesn't the city put in hydrants though?
Yes, those hydrants are obsolete. They're not being the standards nowadays, it's part of six inch fork with two. I believe those are just two little, two inch forks, so they're outdated, they're no longer, they're obsolete.
So are they gonna be decoration of the fire hall like?
Um, that's what they said they wanted to do.
Oh, sweet.
Any other questions?
All right, well, then I move to approve resolution six dash twenty twenty five, a resolution declaring city of Boardman personal property as excess.
I got a motion in the second, I think we got all our questions, are there any, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution seven dash twenty twenty five, adopting design standards for small wireless facilities installed within city of Boardman right of way.
I will add a little bit on this one. So when we went through this process, kind of the question that came up after the last meeting was, well, how do we, how do we confirm that they meet the requirements to cite them? And our development code is not applicable in the right of way? And these are items that would be placed in the right of way? And yet we still wanna make sure that they meet some minimum design standard for how they're installed. We don't want them to impact sidewalks or holes that are already in place. We don't, we don't wanna create conflict wireless facilities are installed, so two, as a resolution, it would normally be valid denied of adoption, or it could be. We've made this effective at the same time that the uh, when the, when the ordinances that you just approved, they would be effective at the same time. But it just allows us that ability to look at them, those items in the right of way. As we do the development code update, we may make those changes to the development code so that we have comparable standards, whether it was in or out of the right of way. This is kind of the interim fix to get us from here to there, so.
So this might seem like a silly question, Carl, but what exactly is a small wireless facility?
Yeah, so we've already seen them around town. PDT fast put them in. So they're just simply usually a short pole, they could be anywhere from twenty to thirty five feet tall. Sometimes there's what's called in the industry a doghouse, a small box, it's on the ground near them. So it's how they power. So you're used to seeing like the big, on the water tower, Verizon has all the wires on that, or all the antennas on that. And then on the, the Tallman property down at the Fort Moore Water Change, they've got the cell tower. Those are traditional cell deployments. Small wireless is much smaller facilities, more, more closely cited. So it's supposed to get you from your, we've gone from two G to three G to four G, and now we're making this shift to five G. And the small wireless is how they do that in a smaller area, they're able to boost the the deployment in a smaller geographic area. Now, some wireless facilities are deployed on buildings, but those would be design standards in our development code. So that's why I'm saying we're trying to figure out how to, how do we have a standard when something's in the right of way? Cause we don't want it to interfere with traffic, we don't want it to interfere with other things we put in the right of way. Either above the ground or below the ground.
Well, then I move to approve resolution seven dash two zero two five, a resolution adopting design standards for small wireless facilities to be installed within city of Boardman right of way.
Yeah, a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, action items, Barrows County Clean Water Consortium, community members.
So when the initial meeting was held with the with Morro County and the board, they requested each city locate three individuals that were outside of city limits that they could, that we could present. These were not representatives of the city, this is not a committee or anything like that that have any, any say. But they also wanted a representative that would be assigned by the council specifically. And I felt that Mike Lees would be the best contact for that, he knows our system, most knowledgeable, so he would be a representative to the city that he could act, answer directly, he would have the most information, most knowledge. And then I'm requesting the ability to just present three names. Again, the consortium will do with what they want with those names, they select them, they don't, it's totally up to them, it's that that board that will decide that. The individuals that I have selected are all from Westland, because that was kind of where their focus was right now, so I've always most. So I'm simply asking for approval to do that.
Well, I move to appoint Mike Lees as the city of Boardman representative for the Morro County Clean Water Consortium, and authorize city manager Hammond to provide names to consortium and give their considerations.
We got a motion in the second, any discussion?
My, sorry, only question with Mike is, I don't know, how is all works, so is he like an employee or is he a paper? So if he went to this, like, you'd be paying him extra to go do this?
He wasn't paid to do this, correct?
So we know what the time commitment looks like?
I don't.
No.
Oh, yeah.
If, I mean, right now, we're committed to, as a executive board, meaning once every two months at a minimum. As we go through and do some of these projects, I, I I'm mainly the person to take in care of day to day, pulling things together. We're gonna be involving them in part of the community outreach, they'll be kind of the vetting group as we get projects through. So I would imagine at, at the high, probably a couple times a month, and possibly involvement with those community outreach events to kind of be there and see how it is and, and help us facilitate those. So I don't think it's gonna be a major time commitment on there, but it is something that we, we value and we listen and bring, you know, public input and say on these projects, so. Not a major time commitment, but a couple times a month at topside saying.
And I hope we're connected to, Mike's here right now, we're gonna leave in Thursday. So we would hopefully connect with that.
I think one of the reasons we have the advisory tube is to make sure there's a connection between you guys, what the consortium is doing. So they will be able to relay that information, you will be able to give them information, we just want that connection to the whole area.
So just a comment, I do, I do think, you know, having that partnership is important, but I think if given Mike's expertise, I think if, if in some of those community outreaches he is being used more so, I would hope that that is also one either appreciated, right, that the city is allowing us to, to have Mike there. Or there is that partnership of, you know, assisting with, with Mike's ability to be there.
Yeah.
Any other questions, that we're still in discussion?
Were, Christine, were you trying to say that you'd like the consortium to pay Mike's fees?
I just, I, I just wanna make it clear, because I think even, you know, made it clear, Councilor Solana, as far as like, we would be paying for Mike to be there. And so that's why I was asking, what was the commitment gonna look like? Because essentially, then that determines how much, how much we're, we're paying Mike to be there. And it sounds like, you know, aligning it to when he is already here would be convenient, but if there's more, and there's more and more, like, he's being used more, right? You know, you want, one, I, I would, I would appreciate, right, just that appreciation to Boardman.
Right.
If not, just that partnership, right? That we're not being abused. Sorry, looked like you wanted me to say one more thing.
What do you mean?
I don't know if this is a technical question for Matt and Dave, or if it's more of a question for Mike and Brandon, but if there's engineering work to be done to decide about this process and the connectivity, is that going to be engineering work that the consortium pays to have done, whether it's your engineer or our engineer?
We will be engaging with a, with an engineering firm to take care of a lot of it. And we'll be doing an outreach on that, and if it coincidentally is the same, we'll be paying for that. With this initial work that we're doing on Westland, it's not, it's not your engineer who's doing the work, but we are getting information from them, and we'll be checking with them to make sure it doesn't mess up anything with operations of of the city of Boardman. And so we fully plan that, we'd be lucky for you to pay it, but we're not expecting you to. I mean, we're, we're looking to have that covered with, with funds that the consortium has in place.
And I'm not trying to be petty, I just wanna understand how.
And clear understanding is best going into these kind of arrangements, especially on something as, as sensitive as this nitrile issue.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All right, time to vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, to the next one. Public Advisory Committee Appointments.
So this is in Carla can chair and Amanda can chair some stuff, so what, what happens is there are times that we are specifically appointed this person to be on this committee and
One.
Yeah. So.
So the example that I outlined is the passing of role, who's appointed to our TSP. Benjamin Tucker worked for the county, he's left, we need to replace him on a, on a board. AWS actually has requested that we provide a, somebody in, other than Kaylee, with Kaylee's providing backup support. And then this is Oregon has specifically asked that Ryan Ruff, well, he will participate. They want him to not be a, a, a member of the PAC. So those are just, you know, and again, we're not asking you to make all these changes, we're, this is actually asking you to give us the authority to amend as we need to go, because what we know of these, we still have a year and a half left of this process, there will be others that will happen.
I move to authorize city staff to make representative adjustments to public advisory committees, co- parks master plan, recommendations of the plan, economic opportunities analysis, housing needs analysis, comprehensive plan slash development code to meet needs of entity representation as necessary. Appointment changes will be noticed to the council without need for a re-adatement.
I'll second that.
Motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Strategic Plan Adoption.
So this is, again, what we talked about last work session, this is the document, has five goals. Amanda and I were kind of, kind of recapping the things that you guys have done, and and this is kind of that, that capstone, so we, we have a, you guys have a council mission. You have five specific strategic goals. Within those goals are gonna come everything that we're spending money on, all of our directives, like the CIP, they are somehow connected to those five goals, and if they are not connected to those five goals, then we really need to question, will we wanna do those things? So it really is setting up, when you look at the future, years down the road, it just aligns it. It's, it's a pretty cool accomplishment when you kind of think about it, in a very short time.
I move to adopt the strategic plan as presented. I got a motion in the second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hey, the PMP Park naming and park design contest would sound like kind of a cool thing.
Yeah, I know, so this is a Carla thing, but also, like, Mayor Keever, you talked about this, it was somehow, it was funny how all that kind of blends, so. Go ahead, Carla.
Yeah, so as part of the park master planning process, this is two things that have come up. One is park naming. We have a number of parks around town that don't have a name. Whether we knew that or didn't know that, we've kind of come up, there's River Ridge, there's the parks that are happening in that subdivision. We by default renamed the park over by Amson to Zuzu Park, we've got City Park, but the parks that we identified, and I want to put these in the right order. Park design, park naming, there's, or not park naming, the parks on Ford River Ridge, subdivision parks, Hillview Park, now, we've kind of assigned a name to Hillview Park because that's the name of the subdivision, but that's the land that the city owns over that way, behind Mount Hood and Mount Adams Streets. And then there's the park blocks, again, we've been kind of by default calling them the park blocks, but we wanna name it something. And then City Hall Park, now, and after we've written this and put this out, somebody's story shared that the chamber named this Pettigrew Park, but that was never an action that I am aware of that the council took. So I don't know if the council wants to acknowledge that it was named Pettigrew Park. And we could take that one off the list, but I didn't, when this was written.
Top Park?
Pardon?
It's not Tater Tot Park?
Well, the sign says it's Tater Tot Park.
Little Tot Park.
So there's some confusion on this, it's Tater Tot Park, but then the chamber took an action as well, and again, I don't think that action came to city council, but Karen might be able to tell us, council Pettigrew.
They just, sometime when they were giving me an honor, they thought it would be nice to name that, and I said, oh, I don't think so.
I think it was at a rewards banquet like two years ago.
Yeah, and so I, I think it would be great to say.
Land Weston built that park? Yeah, they donated, well, they donated all of the equipment into it.
That's why it's called Little Tots.
It was already developed.
What, what was developed about it?
Well, what I'm saying is, is people went out there and leveled it all, and, and then they planted grass on it, and that was it. And then equipment was put on it, and I think Land Weston donated the equipment. The only reason I know that's, cause I was out there with a break deal, so. But that was a long time ago.
So the objective with the park naming would be to identify what names, what parks do you wanna have a community kind of involved process to submit names for those parks? What we would be asking is for names to, we'll blast this out, we'll get community involvement, we'll get school involvement. Kind of like what you did with the motto and the low, the motto process, it'd be similar to that. Deadline for submissions would be April eleventh. Finalists would be, we would narrow it at the Parks Master Plan PAC level. And then those final submissions or what kind of rises to the top would come to the council. And then the finalists would be presented here, and the final selection would be made by the council. So that's the park naming. And what I'm really looking for is, do you wanna narrow that list? Do you wanna kind of just identify one or two parks to name, do you wanna have a broader list? Look at her little direction here. And then on the, the park design process, that one was designed, there was a conversation with the high schoolers when the parks folks were here back in January. And the determination from the high schoolers was, give us one park and let us kind of make, let us kind of design it. And at the last Parks Master Plan, at the PAC meeting that happened, gosh, I don't know, it's all running together, like last week. We'd like to put forward for the high schoolers to design Zuzu Park. That's what we'd like to put forward. It's a blank slate, it's not a lot there, there's a lot of comment that it's not safe, it's not lighted, there's parking's not good, and, and it really needs some work. Based on other input that the Parks Master Plan had into the relocation of the splash pad, kind of designed City Park, redesigned City Park at the last Parks PAC meeting. The splash pad, that's kind of the, that's the preferred location, it's not a final decision, but the preferred location for the relocation. but the preferred location for the relocation of the splash pad would be City Park. Um talking about a kind of upgrading the playground equipment there and some other things that we're talking about that could be at City Park. So it's kind of like, well, we kind of know what's going to happen at City Park, because Zuzu Park is really a blank slate that would really allow a group of high schoolers to, you know, they could do challenges, they could they could give any groups of three or five or 10 or whatever and submit five different design. It's up to them what they want to do. But again, that would kind of come back to the PAC and then it would come back to the city council for you guys to kind of pick a design, and that doesn't mean that's the final design, but it would be a significant input into a design process for Zuzu Park.
I don't think it should be high school kids. They're not the ones playing on it, it should be the elementary kids. Elementary kids should be the ones designing their playground. It'd be like adults making a playground, the adults make the playground to their background. And and so when usually when adults get going on a playground, they build it totally that might not even coincide or with with an elementary kid. We're going to have high school kids do it, maybe the elementary kids need to have a huge impact into it.
Can we facilitate that? Is that something that that the school district can help us facilitate, that the high schoolers could kind of be could could figure out how to partner with, you know, a group of high schoolers could partner with a class at at one or a either elementary school to kind of create a design that could be a partnership design?
And the high school doesn't even come to our city council meeting, so I.
But the high school, they could actually do a CAD drawing with.
Correct, and so if we did a partner, I I mean, so they could be the adult in the in a room
Right.
working with the elementary kids to give their ideas.
The inspiration.
And some of the posters that were brought to the park um open house would be great fodder for littler kids to use, to say, oh, I really want this, or oh, I really want this. Maybe they could do class voting or something, that would be kind of, it would have some powerful.
Well, we did it at the um L, at the mayor's conference when they had this. What they did is they went and they had open houses in the gym or the cafeteria where the kids would come in, and so the adults would facilitate or the park people who were developing it, or whoever you hired the firm to do, and should facilitate what could be afforded and how it makes a match, and then the kids would give their input. And so it was not, it was a process to be able to get to it, and it wasn't, it was like a year process to be able to get it because they wanted to make sure they got as much input instead of just the ones who only come. And so it was kind of, okay, that was, thank you. And so, because I do that all the time with my kids, so um I don't have a problem with that. So trying to get more, just get the involvement of the young kids.
I think we can, I think we can figure out a way to build that in.
Absolutely, because they're the ones that are going to use it.
I don't necessarily agree with Mayor Keever, because I think you can get a project-based learning. Um and so I do think it is something that could be very valuable for high school students to do, but I do think we could open it up to the younger kids as well.
There seem to be, when the the project consultant was here and she met with some of the high schoolers, there seemed to be an interest, she came back with the high school is having interest in doing this. So that's kind of where it came from. Um but I I know this is pretty figuring out how to incorporate those people that would be using it as much as the the people who would be designing it, but I think there's a a learning component that can happen at high school as well.
And and it might just be easier just to go and I can meet with John and um Mr. Sheller and
Jay and Cameron or, yeah.
But I truly believe you got to get the input of the kids.
Yeah.
The younger kids.
Yeah.
Um the if the hi, if the high schoolers are the ones that are going to be doing all the computer program, those kids, the younger kids have a more difficult time, but when you develop a playground, it should be the kids who are going to be using it.
I I do think the name, I would I would appreciate it if it was more kids versus just community members.
Yeah, my my intent with the naming was to push it out, you know, to work with with Mr. Hammond and push it out to schools, push it out to the community, you know, anybody can submit a name for a park.
My my preference would be the schools, like the kids, yeah.
Yeah, and we definitely want guidance on that, so so the council would rather have this be like the naming through schools?
I think I would agree that the 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 kids are going to use it more, it should be through the schools.
Or we could even follow the same way that we did with the with the model type thing.
We could. We.
You know, they tried to throw it that way, because that's how Wendy River got its name, Wendy River Elementary was through the school, and then I think there was a community input and some things, and eventually they came up with a a name that was chosen.
And like K six age group per naming? Again, the the model thing's simple, I mean, it's just that feedback and cracking it.
I don't know if it.
I think that the only, I think the only problem I see with trying to have the kids do the naming is not everybody's going to know where these Four River Ridge subdivision parks were located.
Or a weekend service.
You know, I mean, like there's some, some things like that. Um or Hillview Park, since it's, anyway.
Just another question, does every park need a name?
So to some degree, yes, we've had this conversation about a couple of things. One, location, E M S response.
Yeah.
Go to River Ridge Park one.
Oh, yeah, I'd say it's more generally.
Right.
One of the street corners or.
Right, we're we're.
I get it, I was just.
And then and then and then we'll give it the chamber, community marketing, I mean, yeah.
It might, because of the location, you're you're right, um it might be easier to like assign one, you know, or two to the schools, like Sam Barren, you.
Okay.
You're working on the City Park or Hillview Park.
And the the, you know, the names that are chosen will go to those specific ones.
Sure, no, I like that.
And it'll be, because it's kind of hard to think about what you would name something if you don't have an idea of what it looks like, have never been there.
I like I like the idea of assigning a school, then you're not eliminating
Yeah.
students, because who knows, maybe a kindergartner comes up with a really good
Oh.
out of the, you know, whatever, whether that is a brainchild of being taught in a home or whatever. But and then maybe a high school kid comes up with a really good name of a park, and so you'd be able to.
Each each school would have, like I said.
I'm just a thought, I mean, I would.
My vote would be to give the City Park to the youngest kids, because it's the most visible park, but.
Well, I think the other question in this with the park naming um is which parks do, I mean, again, the Four River Ridge subdivision parks don't have any names.
Mm-hmm.
Um Hillview Park, we've kind of, kind of, we've we've nicknamed it. Um the Park Walks need a name, um and City Hall Park, again, doesn't really have a name. I think the playground has a name, but we've got a whole thing going on here, so is that named or Tater?
It's Little Tots.
Little Tots Park, sorry. Uh Little Tots Park appropriate for everything, or is that a component of a larger park?
Hmm.
We'll we'll look at that, we'll take that.
What's the Park Walk?
The Park Blocks are what were the B P A properties?
Oh.
Yeah. Over time, the intent is to acquire a number of those and have a walking path that connects. Uh the Heritage Trail may actually um be rerouted through that as well.
But have a general name for it, yeah.
Right.
So if you look for one name for Park Blocks.
It's a really good question.
That that kind of has been discussed, like we're right now called Green Space. And the Green Space is, I mean, it's technically that, but you thought it's having more lean to power technically.
It could almost be a good high school one.
Oh, there you go.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah.
You got all kinds of, you got to wire, I mean.
No, that's cool. Yeah, I think that's the direction.
I'd say that it has to be that way, but just.
So I think we do need to appoint somebody. This is what it says here.
To approve.
To appoint somebody from the city council.
We'd like to be on that.
Design selection committee.
To be on. Anybody that has passion?
I want to, I want to go to the Parks Design Selection Committee.
I move to approve city staff to proceed with the Park Committee and Parks Design Contest and appoint Brenda Prophet to the be the city council representative of the Park Design Selection Committee.
Well, I think that's simple, I don't think it's here.
There you go.
So I thought the the.
I need a second person.
Okay.
And then we can have a discussion.
You got a second?
Another second.
Okay, we got a discussion now, go ahead.
So I thought um we were doing this and having the kids do it, but then it's going to come back to the city council. So are we having a a committee instead of the city council that's going to make the the decisions?
So for the, yeah, so one of the items that we have in here in this process is that the judging, the judging would be conducted by now this would be of the park design, so um it'll go through the PAC. Um and then the judging would be by a city council member, a Parks District Board member, because it's a collaborative process with the Park District, and then three members of the PAC itself.
Before it comes to council.
Okay.
For a final approval, correct?
There's the other discussion.
So we would, so just so it's clear, so we would just be approving whatever they've decided.
Not necessarily. I mean, you probably would want to, but it doesn't mean you have to.
Correct, yes, exactly.
If you don't think it's appropriate.
Correct.
Yeah.
Then, yeah, we would have the veto power to say, no, go back and.
It it come up with something different.
Okay, yeah.
That that that's the way I was thinking it.
And and when we're looking at the Park Design Contest as being more collaborative, the Park Naming being a clear city council decision. Finalists presented, kind of vetted by the PAC, and then you guys making that final park naming decision.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second, is there any other discussion?
So the naming can be down to the city council approval. But in here, it says Parks Master Plan, Park Naming, Design Contest Selection. So as a multiple, but you just said, can't see the council going to do it?
So, you know, I've read this thing a hundred times, every time I read it, I I I think I did, I read it wrong. But the park design gets down to um revealing designs, we showcase in City Hall, and the finalists will be announced in the May sixth city council meeting. The judging will be conducted by a city council member, Parks District Board member, and three members of the PAC. And then those winning designs will be recognized here, so yeah, so um.
But to Ethan's question, there are three things being moved. One is to proceed with park naming, park design contest, and appoint a member to the city council representative. So three things happening in that one motion.
Some hate motion.
Yep, a pause on the end.
And a point.
Thank you.
I'm going to do one more. Okay. So the name of the PAC goes along the other.
Uh-huh.
Any other discussion? All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, uh the O L C C Local Government Recommendation Elector License.
Okay, so I I've only been a part of this maybe once, but I was on council, but I don't want to cheat, this is you have information or Amanda has information?
I don't have the the license on the street class or anything. I just noted it came to uh the city for uh approval, so.
And and she can, like, the process is, can you explain the, again, the process, because it it does go through you. Karen, you've been involved in this a little bit more, we just don't do it that often, but it is finalized by like the chief of police.
Yeah, I.
We've we've done one, so I've been on council.
So what happens is if somebody, this is for an actual onsite uh license, this is not an offsite, so there's different processes that we follow for different licenses. This is for, from C and D, uh drive-in and Gozo Foods, uh request for a retail on-premises and sales and consumption, indoor consumption and uh figuring that process, uh they will allow minors, obviously, because it's an establishment. The the minors obviously can consume alcohol, but because they're serving food, they can uh request a license. So this is an actual onsite license uh that usually is uh uh approved by the city council or denied. Uh depending on where the council is, you have three options. The options usually are that you can either recommend that the license be granted, you can recommend that it be denied, or you can just stay neutral, or just acknowledge that they've applied for it. Uh so I can tell you, I've done this many years. Um usually O L C C will take the local government's uh advice or recommendation, but they can, you can deny it and they can still approve it. There are no guarantees. So um I've actually denied a license in 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 the past and they've approved it, so um.
Sorry.
It's basically boils down to what that council decides. So if you make a decision, uh you would authorize me to uh proceed forward in our process, which after you approve or deny or whatever, we'll do a background check to make sure that there's nothing that would prevent them from getting a license. And then we forward it back to them, they send it to O L C C for their final process.
And and O L C C oversees.
All of the licensing, right?
Go and check up, the city does not go and check up on these, correct?
They they do all that, they work on that.
So, well, if we have complaint, if the law enforcement receives a complaint, uh we can look into it, but we usually call it O L C C and they send the best thing in it out.
Okay.
And they have, they have a specific uh person that's in charge of these kind of licenses compared to other kinds of licenses, because there's more, there's multiple ones, so.
Well, I I didn't think it was clear. Is this a beer and wine? What what is it?
It's only beer and wine.
It's only beer.
They they have to have a different license to sell hard alcohol.
But I'm 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 wondering why, nowhere, I've read this over and over, and I can't figure out where it says beer and wine.
So it's, I think it's based on the the type of application they apply for it, that that distinguishes the difference.
So then they draw the building here, and it said, it said something about their business hours from eight to nine or something.
Yes, in the statement, yeah.
So are you thinking, I I guess what I'm curious, are they thinking that you would come in and buy a six-pack to go along with your donuts?
No, so this is going to be a license to serve probably draft beer, bottled beer, you would go in and buy a this isn't like a store licensed.
Oh.
It's it's different, like I said, there's like seven or eight different licenses that you can apply for. This is specifically, I believe, to sell draft beer.
Consumption.
Con, yes, they cannot leave, they cannot leave with the alcohol.
It's beer and pizza.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
So they could like go into the Godfather's Pizza, then, yeah, that's what it is.
So then.
And they still have.
Who says that you can, okay, I can see that in the bathroom, you know, where the pizza place part is, so you could say you could have beer with your pizza.
You can probably have beer with your burger in the front, too.
Yeah, well, see, that's that's my question.
Because it's on premise, so I would imagine.
It just is indoor.
And I think that would be up to the owner to decide.
It's it doesn't have the cost.
The applicant chose limited on-premises sales.
Right.
As one of the twelve-ish possibility, which is number two under the list of possible licenses. And she wrote on here, limited on-premises sales.
And then in the diagram, she put order window, which is in the very back piece where the poppy's pizza is.
Right, she's drawn an arrow, which is the people to read here.
Which is.
To point to that window space.
So that's where the. That's obviously, that is the order window, she's.
No, that's just a order window inside, so they
Yeah.
they have to order, like, three quarter minutes or therefore.
But they're going to plan on selling alcohol everywhere, and they need to drink alcohol in a building. Uh that would make sense.
They could, but they, but they can distinguish what.
Correct, they could, yes. But limited that with that designation, they're just choosing, that's the choice they have to choose on so that they can have alcohol in their presence.
Yeah, yeah. So. I would look at, it's it's somewhere similar. I would look at, it's it's somewhere similar, would be probably like bourbon. Because you can't have a beer outside again, they do have kids there and all that other stuff.
Exactly. All right, so I'll take a motion, and then we can have more discussion. I need a motion and a second. Or if I don't get a motion, then.
We'll have moved to approve the OLCC local government recommendation further for license authorized, please chiefs, don't go to complete recommendation.
I'll second that.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second, is there any uh further discussion we'd like to have regarding this application for liquor license?
I just, I just wanna be clear, so so um so other people understand that when they say liquor license, even though it says liquor license, it really is beer and wine. Like, there is, there is a difference, and and um this did come up once before when uh I think it was Dollar General or we approved their license, it was the same thing, they can only sell, they don't sell open containers or whatever, so there are different licenses, but they usually say liquor, and that's where people um sometimes get confused, that they think hard alcohol, and it really is not, like, there is a significant difference between those licenses.
Any other discussion? All right. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? All right, rezone application letter of support.
So this letter that uh the council has been asked to approve and have uh Mayor Kiefer sign is from Tremile. Um this is just a community partner asking for support, the uh Umatilla Memorial County, the next one is the same thing, we're just getting letters just like we asked letters of support when we went and applied for things, it's just now that season where people are applying for grants and they just need municipalities to support them, and Tremile's doing the same thing.
This is for a rezone. So, to rezone for a day center campus, um west of the airport, it's about thirteen hundred acres. As long as the opponent.
I move to approve Mayor Kiefer to sign a rezone application letter of support.
Okay, you got a motion and a second, any discussion?
I'm sorry, I did not hear who's seconded.
Um, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Umatilla Memorial County Connect Project Letter of Support.
Yeah, this is uh from UBC asking for a letter of support, they're writing, uh doing a, like, additional infrastructure investment, which obviously will benefit the city.
Additional.
Yeah, it's it's an extra line that's gonna be over by where Councilor dropped it.
Umatilla um substation to connect to the substation off of Highway seven thirty.
I move to approve Mayor Kiefer signing Umatilla Memorial County Connect Project Letter of Support.
All seconded.
Okay, you got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Right, so we're at the other public comments, is there anybody who wishes to have public comment? I didn't get any slips, so we have no public comment. Now we're going to go to, the only report we're gonna discuss tonight is the police report, we have a presentation by Chief Soko.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, uh before I start my report, uh we have uh uh Greg Armenta here, I wanted him to come and introduce himself, he's our new uh sworn in police officer that's in his uh short training period.
That's who the guy is that's sitting right there.
That's who the guy is, he's sitting right there. Well, we'll introduce him, and I told him he has about ten minutes that he can talk to. And uh he can introduce his wife, Carissa, and uh so we'll turn it over to Greg.
Mayor Council, thank you. Uh my name is Greg Armenta, I've been in law enforcement for seventeen years now. Um and that seventeen years I've accumulated approximately around twenty-two hundred hours of training. I've been a corporal, a sergeant, a patrol sergeant, an administrative sergeant. Um I've done major crime scenes, um just not any kind of S K H R detective work you can think of. Um I am absolutely huge on community policing, I believe police department should be a part of the community. Um and that is one of the reasons that I came here to board, uh between what I've seen um Chief Soko do, being a part of the community, uh and the amazing leadership that you guys have in the police department. Uh there was no other choice, and I decided to leave my my last agency. Um I hate talking about myself.
My being good.
Um if if there's any questions, John, for me, if you want to answer, I just, I don't know what else to say.
Did you come from Nissah?
I did.
Okay. So N- Nissah, if you've never been there, it's pretty similar to Boardman.
Yes. This is, yeah, uh you you guys have an amazing city, just in the short time you've been here, um people I've got to interact with, the officers I've been being trained by, uh you guys have an amazing department here, um I'm very honored to be part of it. Um you know, like, Chris, she's gonna be, soon here she'll be working for Memorial County as a dispatcher. She has fifteen years of dispatch experience, and so she'll be a great addition for them, not for that, um but for us, too, um she's always makes sure everybody's doing the same at the night. So, thank you guys for allowing us to come in your community and be part of it, um. Hopefully, we'll be able to become more part of it, the quality of our time, um charity, coaching, anything we can do, we absolutely want to be part of that. So if there's anything we can do that can help the city or anything like that, please don't hesitate to ask us.
Thank you, we're welcome.
Thank you.
And with him, this young lady sitting next to him is his mother-in-law.
He totally left you out.
I I I'm sure I'll get those before.
Dude, you you forgot the first step, you gotta take care of the mom.
I know, I know.
But you're on the spot.
You can look at the bottom, you can look at the bottom of your page, it's future, that's, well, that's. You can look at the side, too.
Can can I ask, is is, are you on uh, are you on the phone, like, where are you at in this?
So I am, I have already completed my first week of field training. Um Wednesday or Thursday, I will be starting my second week. I believe I'll have three weeks of field training, and then I'll be able to launch shift on myself.
Okay.
Did you just come up with those questions, because we had a time for questions.
I agree, just.
Do I just have, if you have any questions, he's standing there, and then he sits down, and you're like, oh, let me ask you a question.
I'm sorry, I'm just drawing your time.
Okay, I appreciate you taking all of my grief.
So Mr. Brandon, it's gonna have your correlation now, so we filled out their slide. This is the important stuff, right? I mean, anyway, uh this, we'll we'll get through this fairly quick, I'm not gonna eat up a lot of your time, but uh we try to do a a report to give you an idea of what happened with the year, but I also do this uh presentation at uh, well, soon the seniors, um chamber, other places, so the community has a better idea of what's going on in the police department, because nobody cares, I mean, unless you're involved with it, nobody knows what's going on, so. Uh so this is our report for uh January uh one twenty-four to December thirty-first. Uh this is a mission statement that uh we created uh when I took over in twenty-eleven. Uh the Boardman Police Department is committed, uh me, is committed to maintain the trust, respect, and confidence of the citizens and visitors of Portland by by providing the highest level of friendly professional service. We strive to enhance the quality of every individual in our community and make a positive impact in their daily lives. We embrace the highest ethical standards in law enforcement while protecting the rights and dignity of every citizen. So, uh real quick, uh this is over a four-year period, so what I can show you is, is you you can easily see that there's about a thirty-two percent uh call volume increase over the last four years, thirty-two percent. So we went from thirty-seven hundred calls of service in twenty-twenty to fifty-one hundred calls per service in twenty-twenty-four. So that's a pretty significant increase in our call volume, that's why we continue to expand and talk about bringing on uh new staff to uh address the calls for service. Each officer handles approximately four hundred thirty-two calls for service in in twenty twenty-four. If you have questions, Gary, just ask. Uh these are broke-down calls uh of service by the days of the week, as you can see, Fridays and Saturdays are usually our busier day, which is a typical response for law enforcement, but the rest of the day aren't far off from that. If you look, they're they're all pretty steady as far as uh call volume and how interested calls. Uh broke down by call by shift, uh thirty-four percent of our call volume is during the day. Um swing being our busy shift is forty-four percent, that's our busy hours, and and we stay extremely busy. Graveyard, twenty-two percent, which you would think Boardman shuts down at night, but it doesn't stop. Real quick, through our numbers, we've got ten ten death investigations, three child abuse, fifty-two domestic, nine burglaries, eleven stolen vehicles, thirty-four uh criminal mischief, with six of those cases being graffiti. Now, I can tell you in twenty-eleven, that might have been the opposite, we probably had thirty-four graffiti with six being criminal mischief.
I remember those days.
Those those are, those were pretty tough days. Um five drug offenses, when I say drug offenses, five, that's local agency stuff, and we'll get into the vent numbers, the the narcotic code numbers. Uh and I've talked about this over and over and over, our significant DUI issue, uh those, that's that's a big number. Um we continue to see this on a regular basis, that's just our agency, that's not county coming through or Oregon State Police. I can tell you, one weekend in Oregon State Police, they had staff, they didn't have enough people to arrest.
In Boardman?
In Boardman.
Yeah, because I would think twenty-six is low.
Twenty-six is, if you're a community our size, that that number should be staggering to everybody. It really should, because those are what we caught and arrested, those aren't what has actually happened, so. And and I think those numbers are probably jaded because we have other crimes that were DUI hit-and-run, so they may have been charged with a hit-and-run, but they were DUIs, so. Agency assist, uh six thousand, um you know, these numbers, I I can go on with these numbers quite a long time, so I'm not gonna bore you unless you have questions about it. I can't give you every uh ORS that we have, we would be here for hours, okay? So these are just general numbers of our most common offenses that we deal with.
So the shots fired, is that actual shots fired, or somebody thinking it's?
Those are reported shots fired.
Okay.
Ninety-nine percent of the time, they're probably fireworks.
Thank you.
But we can't confirm one way or another.
Sure.
So those are what's reported to us. Uh in the past year, uh Boardman officers uh patrolled a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles in Boardman. Uh think about how big Boardman is, a hundred and twenty-five thousand miles, that means you're out there a lot, okay? Um just a quick uh example, that's driving around the earth, the equator, five times. Considering our size, that's extensive mileage, as you can see, and our officers are out there being seen. Uh visibility in law enforcement is a deterrent. Typically, if a criminal sees a cop, they go somewhere else. What do you do when a cop comes behind you and you're just driving? I guarantee you, you slow down. You, I mean, that's just normal reaction, well, criminals do the same thing, they track, and so the more we're out there, the more we're seen, the more they go somewhere else. Only they're not doing it here. Interesting number, so our officers conducted, as you can see down here, eleven hundred twenty-one traffic stops in twenty-twenty-four. But if you look up higher, up here, they issued two hundred forty-seven citations. Does that seem like a good number?
Is that the mall traffic stops?
What I would tell you is, we focus more on educating and trying to get voluntary compliance, I'll get that, into that and to another slide. So not everybody gets stops, gets a citation, we give a lot of warnings. Um you know, trying to educate and motivate the 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 public into making differences. Our huge issues, uh driving damageure, big number, same with no operator's license, no driver's license. DWS, uh driving law suspended, um and then we've got all the other stuff that comes in there citations, so failed stop-at-stop signs, uh left-to-center, I mean, there's tons of other issues that we issue citations for. Uh but those were not issued citations, those were just part of the the context.
Well, I believe it's a compliment to say that it's a very big difference between a police force that has two hundred forty-seven citations with eleven hundred twenty-one stops versus an inverted kind of, or a closer alive number. Because in two thousand and eleven, it was not very popular to be on the police department.
So I I I would go back to those years before, and one officer would have issued eleven hundred citations by himself and did. One officer.
I think I can remember.
I didn't, I didn't make the traffic violation.
I got pulled over nineteen times in eight months.
I'm saying, I'm for the tickets, I've pulled over a lot.
I think it's just a thank you.
Yeah.
So for the year twenty twenty-four, officers arrest a hundred ninety-seven uh offenses. Uh hundred eighty-six of those were adults, a lot of them were juveniles, a hundred fifty-six were misdemeanor crimes, and unfortunately, forty-one of those are felony crimes. Uh to me, that that number, well, any of those numbers are, you never wanna have to arrest somebody, but those felony crimes, those are serious, serious violations or or crimes. Uh of the felony charges that were arrested, warrants, assaults, sold vehicles, misdemeanors was common for DUI assault and disorderly conduct. On the juveniles, uh those offenses, uh disorderly conduct, theft, and sex abuse. Uh we investigate a lot of sex abuse cases uh in our community, uh and our detectives are just getting eaten alive. Kyle, our detective, will be in LaGrange tomorrow, doing three different interviews on sex abuse cases. Three different cases, so um scary. Our drug team, I had, we talked about this a little while ago, the Blue Mountain enforcement narcotics team was founded in nineteen eighty-six by the Penn Cliff Police Department and the Oregon State Police. Over the years, it's expanded uh with multiple agencies, I believe right now there are nine active participating agencies between Umatilla and Laurel County, along with state police. We are one of those agencies. Uh in the last year, they arrested sixty-nine uh people. Those numbers are under. The methamphetamine, a hundred and twelve gallons of methamphetamine, deadly seeds. Fentanyl, I've said it many times, fentanyl is an extremely deadly drug, uh they took off eight eight, over eight thousand pills.
That's not just Boardman, though, right?
Uh none, none, that's.
These numbers are.
So it's those multiple, multiple agencies, so Umatilla Memorial, I will tell you that we have cases here.
Yes.
I just, I can't get into them, we've got.
Yeah, I just wanna be clear, that wasn't just Boardman.
Right, a lot of these cases that they do evolve into other cases, so you don't see a lot of media hype on these because they are very busy and very, and 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 I think you'll see here, uh they're they're very well-known in the region and are highly respected during enforcement team. They do a great job, put some really good cases together. Um forty-five firearms seized with those drugs, so that's, that's scary, too.
What for the vaping cartridges, is that a curiosity?
So uh sometimes those could be marijuana vaping cartridges or uh other controlled substances that they're using. Uh we'll get into this a lot, because I kinda talked a bit later, but uh again, our three focuses when it comes to traffic enforcement, we don't have a quota, so we don't get a. So we don't get a free toaster for out, however many citations we issue. Some cities, uh, actually get, uh, a portion of the fines that are issued by citations. We do not. We've opted out of that. And I would tell you, I would never encourage that because I don't wanna give the impression that we're issuing citations to fund our position. That is not what police officers do. They're supposed to gain compliance, and so we're not in a position to, one. You guys may wanna, wanna generate the revenue. I wouldn't, I wouldn't recommend it. It sends up, it sends up a big stigma. Uh, but we're getting back to the three desired outcomes, the increased accountability for the, uh, uh, traffic enforcement, uh, the behavior modification and increased safety. So by contacting and stopping violators, we're trying to educate them. If we educate them more than once, then that means that we're not getting our point across, and so we may go to the next step, which is a citation. Uh, we really, really try to gain compliance outside of issuing a citation, because these citations are not cheap. Uh, it's expensive to issue a citation to, uh, or for you to receive a citation. Uh, very proud, uh, of this accomplishment. In twenty-twenty-two, uh, we were awarded our accreditation, uh, Oregon State Accreditation, which is based on a hundred and two professional standards. Um, they focus on life, health, safety, and accountability, and it strengthens public trust. Cause that tells the, the public that we're doing this right. We're, we're, we're doing what is required of us as a police agency, and we're following the best practices and the best procedures out there, so. Uh, great accomplishment, and our team worked really hard to do that then. SRO has a major huge impact on our schools with our youth, the, the uh, mentor, uh, mentality that we give with those kids. So we're walking down the school, high-fives, instead of the kids looking away from us. Uh, we've built a lot of record. The SRO was instrumental in that project, in that program. Uh, I can't tell you how important it is. But by also having that, we've seen direct offenses go down in the schools, our fights, several things go down. Uh, I'll use it as an example. We used to teach Drivers Ed at no charge to the students. That went away during COVID and has never come back. The school has not run it back. But I can tell you now, it's, they're having more problems with uninsured, uh, uh, uninsured drivers and unlicensed drivers at the school. It costs two hundred dollars to send your student to Hermiston to go through Drivers Ed. We don't have that pro, program here. And a lot of students, I know when I sent my kids to it, we had to find a way to get them back and forth, and we both worked. My, my, my both worked, so how are we gonna get our kids? So there's a lot of people that don't get driver's licenses or go to school or go, go through a Drivers Ed program to get their license or keep their insurance.
You have to have Drivers Ed now to drive.
You don't have to.
It makes your insurance, it makes that.
It makes it a lot cheaper for your insurance, and you have to have, you have to be able to pass the test. And so they educate them on how to do that, so. And they give them the practice, uh, because we actually had, we had submitted a report to the state, uh, a driving course, an outline. It was a full curriculum, and it took us a couple of years to get.
There's a rumor the park was starting to end up.
Well, George used to catch the calls.
Yeah, I know that. That's why I heard.
That was pretty good, because he was our certified instructor. He got certified by.
It's a rumor. I haven't heard anything official.
The school used to offer it as a class. Yeah, we, we did, uh, and, uh, it, it, we, we saw a lot of those issues go down when we were providing the service. Um, so I hope this avoids that each time. Uh, the, the other thing I would also, uh, emphasize is keeping our kids in school. Huge, to keep our kids in school. We passed the eight-time truancy curfew. City Boardman, one of the first in the area to try and keep our kids in school, because if they're not getting education, chances are they're not gonna succeed. They're getting into trouble. So the more we can influence that, the more we can keep our kids educated and, uh, keep them out of danger.
Well, with, uh, it's kind of a, a tap on your shoulder for the police department, with the institution of a recourse officer, because it's kind of blossomed into, or we have officers at sporting events. We have officers at all of our community events, and so they're highly visible, you know, it, it's, you don't have to do it, but you've chosen to do that and as, as cheap. And I think it's paying off because everybody sees officer. I mean, I mean, it's nothing to see three or four officers at a, at a football game or at a basketball game. You know, it's, it's, the, the visibility is, is, is crucial, and I think our community is seeing it and responds to it in a certain way.
Well, wh- what I will tell you that is, uh, we have a team that cares about the community. They want to be part of it. They are part of it. That's what we look for when, when Greg was talking earlier. Those are the things, those are the officers that we look for. We want them to be engaged. They need to be part of the community because that's who we work for.
Do you know football?
Probably not very well.
Yeah, three-year-old daughters. So any girls sport? Oh, I think they're, uh, cheap chocolate might put you to work. I'm fine with that.
I'm excited to say that our SRO, uh, just, uh, yesterday received, uh, the first responder of the year award by the Chamber. Um, unfortunately, we, they wanted to do the presentation at the awards banquet, um, which is would have been great, but his daughter's sixteenth birthday is the same day, and there was no way, no way he was gonna miss that, and I respect that, family first, so. Uh, but he, he represented as well the school. Um, I'm not sure who all from the school, we'll find that out later when they do the video, but the school put him in for the award, so. Very proud. Community relationships, I got into what the, the mayor was talking about, uh, being, uh, part of the community, engaging with the community, going to our community night out, our walk to school, our trunk or treat that we're doing, um, Little League softball, you know, all the coaching stuff that we do. Uh, we encourage it. We encourage it, but the reason we can do that is because we have a supportive community, we have a supportive, uh, city council, we have supportive admin staff that allows us to get that out and, and have our people be part of that. Uh, the men and women of this agency, um, they pride, great pride in their work. As you can tell, you see them all off. They're very involved in a lot of stuff. Um, I, I read this word for word, but you know, I, you can read, so. Uh, I, I do wanna thank the community and the council for their continued support. Law enforcement gets beat up on a regular basis. Um, I can tell you that usually nobody wants a cop until the bad guy's knocking on the door. Or, or that necessary evil. Um, but I think our community is seeing past that, that we are trying to be part of the community more so than just that necessary evil. I think that truly put it that. And I, I will say this, as your chief of police, I am dedicated to ensure that every member of our department works diligently to fulfill our mission of maintaining the safety of the community important. We are committed to providing exceptional customer service to all citizens and to uphold the highest standards of professionalism and integrity in our daily operation. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I did it less than an hour.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, chief. Ever skip down, uh, councilor comments, and then councillors having comments they'd like to share.
Uh, welcome aboard.
I guess I'd just like to make one comment about the other day when I did the opening thing for the water building. You know, I made a point to, uh, honor the citizens of Boardman, and I think these are the reasons why, you know, like we've got a great police department, we have, you know, there's lots of things here. But having the support of our community makes us a better community to live in and makes us the kind of community that you want to be in. When you have councillors and staff and stuff that are willing to do whatever they can to make you a successful area, and I just, uh, I just am so happy to be here and this, we, we, welcome aboard. You're gonna love it here.
I, I already did. I, I'd just like to share, um, we were really nervous about moving up there. I lived in this, uh, for thirty years or so. Um, we arrived here Saturday evening without three, three thirty, something like that. Uh, we could go Saturday. And then fifteen minutes of being here, we had twelve people there to help us unload our trailers. I mean, the the amount of kindness that, that the people in New Jersey community shows, I mean, it, it just, other, other communities should strive to have that kind of, of kindness shown. You, everything I've seen with you so far, the people, everybody is just amazing. You guys are very blessed. I'm, I'm very glad that we're able to be part of this town.
I, I will say that I, I do know a few individuals in, in Nisa, and they spoke very highly of you and said that they would miss you being in Nisa, so they, they really did say that, so.
Well, I got called a lot of these.
Well, we're just picking Nisa off.
Just give what Brandon did when he got here.
You start with the chief and then you start going down.
I do, yes. So, um, I just wanted to bring up, um, I've been hearing a lot about just the concerns with the recycling center, the, and I know we've talked about relocating those, but I just wanted to bring that up again. Um, they're, they're just not being used appropriately, appropriately where they're at.
This one is great.
Yeah. Right.
They use it all the time now.
Yeah. Um, and then, um, another thing that I, um, I know I've brought up before, but just the census thing. Yeah.
That's it this year. Very special.
It's about to bring it up, yeah. Um, and then, um, the last thing I was gonna bring up is just, um, um, I remembered this, um, recently, um, but the city council, um, last, um, as far as the city council, there was concerns that I had. And I think sometimes when you're not involved, you don't know who to contact. And there was probably at least like three times, three different times that I had reached out to somebody at the city. I sent an email, and I never heard a response. Not a like, hey, this is the wrong person, but I'll send your message on, or, you know, like, you know, whatever. Um, I never had a response, and, um, and I just, I just wanted to be able to say that, that I think it's important that, um, everybody knows, like, if somebody's reaching out to make sure that it's getting to you, that's where it needs to go, um, so that we don't have people that are out there, you know, that don't, they're feeling like they're not being heard. So, just wanted to say that.
Well, I always have a mayor comment, so mine will. I was talking in Charlotte about the, the adopting the chip, the code. We need to keep adopting, making appropriate changes to the code to address the health district's bus that says mobile bus that's not been mobile. And I think we just, with all the development that's gonna happen on South Main Street, we need to make sure that we address our code so that we can't have things like that on a, a street that is the centerpiece of our community. And, uh, as long as we just keep working on that, uh, this year, cause that's what we're working on, to make sure that we address things that need to be fixed and potential things that, so we can't have those things like that. So that was all I had, I think, for, uh, uh, my mayor thing, but we'll go to our executive session script. The Boardman City Council will now meet in executive session pursuant to ORS one ninety-two point six-six-zero-two E, which allows the council to meet an executive session for real estate. Uh, we'll probably be going past nine o'clock, and so if you need to excuse yourself. Okay, twenty-five minutes is what he says, so if you need to excuse yourself, uh, make sure that you will, you can be excused. Representatives of the news media are designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session in person. The public virtual Zoom meeting link will be executive session, as permissible, executive session meetings are not subject to House Bill twenty-five sixty. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on or otherwise disclose any of the deliberations or anything said about these subjects during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session is previously announced. No decision may be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session. Executive session is expected to last less than thirty minutes, and action is planned after we resume the council meeting. All right, this meeting is paused. Right, resume our city council meeting out of executive session, and I'm here to listen to a motion.
I move to authorize city manager Brandon Hammond to sign any documents relating to city conveyances.
Have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? While in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? If motion passes, this meeting is adjourned.